So first thing we're gonna do, uh, tonight's agenda, we're gonna have a call, uh, that, well, that is your call to order. We're gonna have a roll call. We're gonna approve our minutes from our last meeting of September fourteenth. Uh, we have three cases this evening. What else? I think that's it. Let's dive into the roll call.
Member Alfonso?
Here.
Member Bransky?
Here.
Chair, go time tonight? Member Cap?
Here.
Member O'Brien?
Here.
Chairman Sazegad is not here, this is Mayan. And then Member Johnson and this man.
Hey. Moving on, next items, approve the minutes from the September fourteenth meeting. Anybody have any corrections or modifications?
Not here.
Done.
Mr. Cap, you're good? Okay. Uh, entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of September fourteenth.
So moved.
Sure.
Right, got a motion by Member Cap and the second by Member O'Brien. Can get a roll call, please.
Member Alfonso?
Yes.
Member Cap?
Yes.
Member O'Brien?
Yes.
Chairman Brancy?
Yes. All right, um, so a brief introduction on how we handle our cases. Um, what we're gonna do is we'll call the case. Um, I'll introduce the case and then we will ask the, uh, petitioners to come up to the podium. We will, uh, ask you to state your name and address for the record and we will swear you in because all testimony is given under oath. Uh, before this body and then, um, we will have you give your summary of what it, what it is that you're seeking variance for. Or seeking, uh, permission to do and then we'll let the, um, board ask questions. After that, if there's anybody in the audience that has questions to follow the board's questions, we'll entertain those, raise your hand, then we'll have you also, uh, rise, state your name and address for the record and we'll also swear you in because again, all testimonies given under oath. Um, we have three cases. We have one case, uh, out of the group of three that we're gonna kind of get out of the way a little quicker here and this is case twenty-three dash twenty-eight. Which is a zoning variance to parking requirements to operate a restaurant at eight-ten Maple Avenue. This case is going to be continued to our next meeting in November. Um, we do need to vote on a continuation, but I wanted to ask, was there anybody in the audience that was here to make comment on that case? Because I'd give you the opportunity to put that in the record now, or you could come back at the continuation on November ninth. Anyone going once, going twice? Yes. Yes, you want me to dial back to that?
Absolutely.
Okay. So it appears we don't have anybody to, uh, make comment on that one case. So do we want to do a, a roll call on continuation? Okay, so entertain a motion to continue case twenty-three twenty-eight. Zoning variance to parking requirements to operate a restaurant at eight-ten Maple Avenue.
So moved. I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Yeah.
Member Alfonso?
Yes.
Member Cap?
Yes.
Member O'Brien?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
We had a date on that meeting.
I think it's November ninth.
It is November ninth.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, real quick, I'm gonna dial back up one item in the agenda that apparently I skipped, uh, item for public comments. So I guess not related to, uh, the cases, but anybody has public comment to, uh, to give, to put into the record? And anything relating to the planning and zoning or ordinances? Okay. Let's get into the first case. I've got, uh, case twenty-three dash twenty-seven. Special use permit for indoor cycling and fitness center at one-eighty-two oh-three Dixie Highway. And let me get to the materials for that one here. Okay, the applicant and, uh, you'll correct me when you get up here if I mispronounce your name. Um, Tashana Wells. And this is at, uh, one-eighty-two oh-three Dixie Highway. And, uh, why don't you go ahead and come on up to the podium? And this is a, uh, currently in a B-two downtown transition district. Um, it's vacant formerly dentist office or medic- classified as medical office and what's proposed is for B-two downtown transition. Indoor cycling slash fitness center, which, uh, by definition in the ordinance is this place of assembly indoor commercial. Um, the materials give what the surrounding properties are in each direction. Legal notice was published in Daily South Town on September twenty-second, twenty-twenty-three. Letters were sent to property owners and residents within two-hundred-and-fifty feet. In our materials, we have the application filled out by the applicant. A response to standards for special use also filled out by the applicant, a project narrative prepared by the applicant. The conceptual floor plan prepared by the applicant. Landlord approval submitted by the landlord, Mr. David Albrecht. And staff exhibits prepared by our assistant director of economics and commercial development. Uh, real quick before we, um, dive in to, um, swearing you in, just a quick background, the applicant Tashino Willis is requesting a special use permit to operate an indoor cycling and fitness center. One-eighty-two oh-three Dixie Highway, the location is a vacant tenant space. Um, two-thousand seven hundred and thirteen square feet previously occupied by dental practice and neighbored by a restaurant and a professional office. The space is classified as a tenant within an existing multi-tenant shopping center as defined in the twenty-twenty-three zoning ordinance. And it goes on and gives us that verbiage. So let's get started. So if you would state your names and address for the record, please.
Tashana Willis, ninety-seven fifty Crescent Park Circle, Orland Park, Illinois, six-zero-six-four-two.
Jimmy Taylor, thirty-six, twenty-five, one-hundred-and-ninety-third Street.
Okay, both raise your right hand. Uh, swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but truth to help you got.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, uh, I gave a brief synopsis of, um, what you're intending to do, so why don't you, uh, kind of summarize, give us, um, what it is in your own words.
You don't want to? How you all doing?
Good.
We're gonna be having more people here, but you don't have enough seats because everybody wants to come to home. All right. So, uh, I was overweight, um, I weighed three-hundred-and-forty pounds at one point in time, uh, when I was thirty-seven, so I fell in love with cycling. So the cycling that we use, we do is sort of like the Peloton bikes. Um, so I fell in love with, um, cycling and export gym and, um, I got, I got a lot of, you know, flavor with her, you know, uh, performance as far as cycling go and, um, it got noted by a lot of people and I was like, you know what, I'm gonna go ahead and try to open them my own. So we have a location at four-fifteen, that's one-hundred-and-nineteenth Street in the city of Chicago right now and, um, been open for four and a half years and, um, it's been, it's been a blessing. It's been going real, real good. Um, a lot of our client base comes from Homewood, drives here and then come to Chicago and cycle with us. Um, so I was like, you know what, let me go ahead and, um, see if, you know, it's, if it's a good idea to go out there and, and I've been coming out, we know, um, Epic Nutrition that's here on Dixie, um, Dixie Highway, so we're gonna get protein shakes and stuff like that from that. So, um, the, the cycling community as far as fitness period in Homewood has great energy. Um, so the energy they put behind me saying, hey, bring it from the city, bring it in, see how it goes. So that was one of the things I was like, let me go ahead and try it out. So that's what brings us here today.
Okay, real good. Um, anything, anything else you want to add or ready for some questions?
Oh, no, bring your questions.
Let's start. Member O'Brien, go for it.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
I just want to, uh, ask a couple of questions to clarify some items.
Okay.
In your facility on one-hundred-and-nineteenth Street, according to one of the materials that we received, it indicates that that's a twenty-two-hundred square foot building with a hundred-and-fifteen bikes, but the application tonight is for a, uh, a building of two-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-three, slightly less, but there's only nineteen bikes.
Right.
A hundred and fifty.
Mm-hmm.
How is that?
So the hundred-and-fifteen bike, the, the way that the compound, we call it the cycling compound, meaning that during COVID, I built the building. We were cycling outside on the deck area because we couldn't go on the inside, right? So to make a long story short, um, I built this building because that's how big the business grew as far as people traveling, right? Um, I know that because I own that side of the street and it was a special bill, there's no way possible that I will be able to bring that amount of people here with anything that I can rent unless it was a warehouse style, um, bill out. So I'm looking at this location to be sort of an express, not nothing as big as we have, um, in Chicago. Now, we will have situations like holidays, Thanksgiving, Christmas, things of that sort, those special rides that everyone here, we'll let them know that, you know, if you all want to stay as a family and ride, work out together, then you still have to go to, you know, um, one-hundred-and-nineteenth Street location.
You're obviously, uh, maintaining, going to keep the one-hundred-and-nineteenth Street.
Most definitely.
Location.
Yeah.
This is an expansion.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Another clarification in our material, not for the applicant, but for staff. Um, the lot size on the non-residential zoning review is two-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-three square feet. That really is the room. Uh, it's one-point-one-three acres.
Commissioner, uh, O'Brien, yes, the, uh, um, the, it was noted and perhaps erroneously, and you must forgive me, it's my first report being written from, for the village. Um, the, it is listed as two-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-three square feet. I'm thinking one spot says seven-hundred-and-thirteen, and for forgiving their key stroke here or there, um, but
Nothing to be forgiven about. I am known for making clarifications.
Yes, so the total, yes, the total acreage of the site is, uh, you know, just slightly more than one-point-one acres. That is referring to the specific size of the tenant space that will be occupied.
Yeah. I have no more questions at this point. Good. Number Cap?
So good evening, um, just questions for staff. So what is the correct, uh, leased space on this?
Um, Commissioner Cap, the, uh, correct space that you should refer to is what was listed on the application and, and most places throughout the tax, which is two-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-three square feet.
Okay, so you transpose numbers because I was doing two-seven-one-three.
Yes, uh, it'd be two-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-three.
Two-one-seven-three, okay. Okay, so, um, even though this is your introduction, I'd like to make the point that, um, I found how you approach, um, assembling the information for us to be very thorough and methodical. So I mean this as a compliment, um, you bring up some other issues which I'm going to, uh, or not so much other issues, but you bring in some additional information which I find useful. Um, you didn't always do that in all three cases, but that's okay. You know, this is a learning experience, but, uh, good job is what I'm really trying to say, uh, to you. Uh, to jump in, these are, uh, comments. And to be honest, you, you guys are almost off the hook. I really don't have any questions for you. Um, but I'd like to use this forum to illustrate some points. Um, this building is, uh, described by your assessment and I'm not finding fault with it as a um, multi-tenant retail structure, however, and then, uh, if I'm not mistaken, at one point you made the, um, um, you use the, uh, total, uh, square footage of a building to uh, roughly calculate the parking requirements for the entire building and I think you were using one parking space for three-hundred square feet to determine that.
Right.
However, I would like, uh, to use this as the starting point. You also note that um, in this space, there is a, um, a restaurant, two professional buildings, uh, two professional offices and then a child care center. Um, the prior use of this space, by the way, was a, uh, dental office, which is a medical facility and what I'm trying to uh, get to is that each of these different uses really have a different parking requirement. Um, not just with our new zoning ordinance, but with our former zoning ordinance. In many ways, uh, I'm really glad that we're, uh, not evaluating, um, a lot of these um, uses according to the old zoning ordinance. The next case is gonna be a real doozy, um, in terms of spa salon. We used to have to calculate number of chairs and employees and blah, blah, blah. It would uh, result in a, uh, tremendously large parking requirement as a consequence, but my point here is um, the restaurant, if I'm not mistaken, I got with my notes, would need one space for, um, two-hundred square feet.
Right.
Two-hundred, so that means it's a little tighter requirement than what you were using for the aggregate for all of them. The two professional buildings, you know, we have to make an assumption about what, uh, size there, um, they were. Um, but the other point is if this space was formerly a, um, a dental, uh, office, it would also uh, incur a parking requirement of about one space for every two-hundred square feet. Which again is a little bit tighter than, um, your aggregate that you're using. Now, please understand, I'm not finding fault with that aggregation, but I'm just pointing out, and this is something that I mentioned when we were considering this new zoning ordinance at the tail end of last calendar year and it, it came up again in a case that we had, um, earlier in the, in the winter, that when we have these multi-tenant buildings, we have the um, possibility of having such wildly, uh, different, uh, parking requirements. Uh, to finish out the thought, the childcare center would also, um, require a different, incur a different parking load, one per three-hundred. So my point is, um, if we were gonna do a, a weighted average here, it would be a little bit, um, uh, we would need more, the long story made short is we would need more parking spaces than your aggregate calculate, calculation would indicate. So my, my point is, my question is uh, not just for us as a commission, but I'm throwing it back to you. I did talk with Angela this afternoon about it, but, um, and it was sort of triggered by, uh, something that you presented in, in one of the cases where you were giving us a little bit of a uh, history of, uh, any action on a particular address or I don't know what the time period was. Thirty years, four years, really doesn't matter, but my point is in situations like this with multi-tenant buildings, I think it would be advisable for us, for somebody, uh, to keep a running summary of um, what the use of the particular space is and what their parking load was. And keep it as a running summary, so then the next time there's a vacancy, we know uh, really what, what, um, what we're really looking at. And so your, your, your pronouncement here, well, you know, it's nineteen thousand square feet total and that sort of requires sixty-five spaces, uh, sixty-two are provided. Well, yeah, that may be well and good if it's if all the uses are one, um, uh, incur a, a parking load of one space per three-thousand square feet, but if we go back to a medical facility, um, we could easily, um, uh, increase that significantly. Does that make sense?
Uh, it, it does. Um, it's, it's something we have to look at with these multi-tenant commercial centers and, and something that I'm learning from our current ordinance. Uh, you're absolutely right that we have these situations where we have a one-to-three-hundred ratio and a lot of our uses actually are one-to-fifty, one-to-two-hundred, especially the ones that like to take advantage of some of these multi-tenant commercial centers because they're great locations.
Right.
So, um, I think the tabulation method that you mentioned is an excellent one. I think it's something that we actually could do with that capacity. It's something we could start to keep a little bit closer track of. I think some of the benefit of some of the multi-tenant commercial centers is that you do get some shared hours of parking, for example, which can provide a little bit of that parking bonus. Um, kind of allow, kind of moves us in that direction of say one-to-three-hundred instead of one-to-two-hundred, one-to-two-fifty. Um, the special use permit application also provides a really unique opportunity to look at parking and say, is this enough for this particular location? Is it not? Um, there's some, so a little bit more generosity that comes from the commission here in those instances. And so in our staff recommendation, it would say, we would probably look to say that there's some on-street parking nearby that provides some additional parking relief, uh, for the site, some of these other factors. And the nice thing about some of these special use permits in these centers is we can take a really comprehensive look at the parking in these centers. And so, um, you know, we're encouraged to do that here. You know, staff recommends that there's sufficient parking for the use based on its peak hours.
So I don't disagree with your, um, introduction, let's say, of available on-street parking, but just I want to make the point rather clearly that we're here to evaluate off-street parking requirements for a specific use. So I want to emphasize that that will probably be my pri- primary focus in, um, when we're evaluating cases like this. I'm not to say, I'm not here to, uh, say that we have never over the years um, in analogous situations, look to very judiciously assess whether or not there's reasonably available, uh, on-street parking, but it cannot always be guaranteed.
So does this affect this case tonight or if it'll?
No, I just wanted, um, I wanted to make the point.
Okay.
They're good questions. Uh, and I think they're important ones when we're dealing with any of these parking centers.
Great. Now, just to maybe bring it back to you, in the, uh, olden days, last year's, uh, zoning ordinance, another way of evalu- evaluating your parking requirement would have been by station, uh, which in your particular case, it would probably be bicycle. You know, that you would have. Um, and that too would, would have generated a different parking requirement, uh, for you as well. So um, I can assure you, in my opinion, that, um, the, um, the, uh, parking load assigned to your specific use is reasonable and even generous, so good luck to you.
Thank you.
Charlie, did you get everything?
Not in the bus.
Thank you, good. Alfonso?
Hi, good evening. Um, I like to talk about business a little bit here.
Okay.
This is very exciting that you're gonna be bringing a new, uh, fitness, uh, possibility here into our town.
Thank you.
Um, you're, you look like you're gonna have, uh, twenty people. Eighteen, nineteen people.
Max, um, yeah, exactly.
Max twenty what?
Yeah, max twenty.
Okay. Um, and then you have a weight room or are you gonna have like a is it gonna be a membership thing or is it gonna be by the, the, uh, by the class that you purchase or?
Uh, all the above. So, um, the cycling portion, it'd be packages. So we do seven rides, fourteen rides, twenty-one in a unlimited package. Um, weight training is most definitely, um, it's added bonus because of it's, my main focus is cycling, but, um, that would most definitely be, um, an addition as well too for packages as far as the weight training go.
So is that supervised, the weight training?
Yes, most definitely. Yeah, everybody's certified, of course. Um, I'm only billing out because I only, I'm only dealing with close to twenty-two hundred square feet. Um, it's just a fifteen-by-fifteen sized room. Um, it's right there on the rendering, um, as well too, um. So not, nothing that big because I, I need more, like I said, my main focus coming home with is cycling. It's to your business.
And then how do people do this? Do they have to call and reserve a spot for a class? And how many classes a day are you gonna have?
Everything is done online. Um, we're gonna have at least three classes, um, three, three classes a day for the most part. Sundays, just one. Saturdays, two. So of course the weekends in the morning time early and then, you know, go and get your hair and nails done at even.
So you have to get in early, get your, your spot, you have online.
Yes.
So that you know that you can get into the class.
Right, exactly. Yeah. And if you do a drop-in, then it's a roll of the dice. If you don't register, you know, and hopefully there's a bike available when you get there, but you know, if you wanna most definitely make sure that you got a bike, you want to register online.
And how many instructors do you have?
Six right now. Yeah, six. Including me, seven.
Great. There's no shower facilities, right? Like that?
No, no.
Um, okay, so the times of the classes are, what time in the morning?
It, well, I'm, I'm gonna scale it back fifteen minutes, probably a five-forty-five class, uh, AM. Um, evening times is five-forty-five PM and seven-fifteen PM.
Okay, so just one class in the morning?
Yes. Yeah, unless, you know.
That's a really good take.
Right, and, and, and that's, you know.
But five-forty-five in the morning tells me that you're gonna have plenty of parking available. Like, that's it. People in that unit are not gonna be
Right, if you get a good ten people that early in the morning, they're most definitely serious about finishing.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, well, I'm looking forward to seeing how this goes for you.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Okay, that leaves me. Uh, I just got three things. Um, and so I wanted to confirm the hours that were stated in the package, which I think we just kind of did. It said Monday to Friday, six AM to ten AM and then five to nine. So what you stated is kind of close to that. So you've got a a window in the morning and then a window in the evening to fit two classes.
Correct.
And then Saturday, Sunday, six to two. So it gives you flexibility about when you can, when to do that, when people want to be there.
Definitely.
What kind of reservations you're getting.
Exactly.
Um, and it says in here, class size twenty-five, but doesn't sound like that's gonna be the case.
No, it's, like I said, it's right now, I'm still using my imagination from the bill out, you know, the demo. So it's, it's hard because it was an old, a dentist. Um, real cookie cutter because it was about five rooms in it. So it we really looked in at the rendering and knowing the square footage, looking at it, I'm like, okay. Well, you know, I'm like.
So if you can fit, so this says twenty-five, so if you can fit twenty-five in there comfortably, you might, you might do that.
Yes.
Okay.
That's right.
Yeah.
Close to each other.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, the next question is, uh, your classes. So I know in a lot of these classes, um, some places they'll play, um, loud music, get everybody going. Um, is that, or I, I know sometimes on the cycling machines, you'll see at health clubs, everybody's got their earbuds in or listening to what they want. Um, sometimes when it's group classes, you know, the spinning classes and whatever, you gotta instructor barking at you and and they're playing loud music. But how, how are your classes gonna, gonna, gonna go? What's your plan?
Of course, cycling is, is energy prone. You gotta have, you know, the right, the right type of music and the volume is most definitely gonna be at a, um, respectable value, far as business go. We got a restaurant, you know, and, um, got the other business line. What is it? Um, event space next door. So the event space is pretty much only on the, the weekend. It's an eight-day-a-month business. Um, the African restaurant is, um, north of us and most definitely, um, we're gonna respect that. Um, and she's gonna be in the class as well too. So we're, we're looking for, um.
Have you, uh, have you explored what that, what that partition is between the buildings? Is it a hard structural wall or is it like an interior build-out wall separating you? Do you know?
Great question, no.
Okay, I just, I've had personal experience with that. I had a, um, salon that had an issue with a, a gym that moved in next door and was just pumping music at, uh, at the whole day. And it was literally driving her customers away. So I'm sensitive to that. Um, of course, the village starts getting a whole lot of phone calls complaining about it. You'll, you'll probably hear about it. Um.
And if I could add, um, to the, the times as well, the, um, group fitness is only open that hour. The um, group fitness is only open that hour, like, you know, so basically if you look at it, it's three hours per day, pretty much. The um, event space, weekends, the restaurant, that's probably, I don't know, I think she probably closes around nine is. The last two hours of um, you know, of the day, right along with our business hours as well too, but most definitely, uh. If one of the neighbors say, hey, it's a little too loud, I have no problem with um, turning it down. And side note. The way the speakers are set up is pretty much on the wall. We're not going to use the, the woofer. The bass is really. Pretty much a problem with businesses with all the vibrating of everything. So we're most definitely gonna be, you know. Keeping a close watch on that, yeah.
Uh, and then the, my third item, just uh get, reading the letter that was included in the packet from your landlord was a pretty shining letter, so. Um, I agree with everything that he uh, he brought up about your location and. What it can bring to the village, so um, a well-done letter by your uh.
What does Dave say? Nice thought. You should read it. No, I, I mean, he's a great guy, man. Thank you.
So. Um. With that, uh, I'll open it up to any, any questions or comments from anybody in the audience and. Uh, it's just a reminder, if you do have one, um, we will ask that you state your name and record for uh, state your name, state your name and address for the record. And you'll be sworn in because all testimony is even under oath. So anybody have any comments to add or any questions? Well, uh, with that, if the board has nothing else, um. I would entertain a. Motion to uh recommend approval for this case.
Mister Chairman, I recommend approval of case twenty-three dash twenty-seven. To grant a special use permit for a place of assembly indoor commercial. In the B-two downtown transition zone for XFA Cycling and Fitness Center. At one eighty-two zero three Dixie Highway and incorporating the findings of fact into the record.
Motion made by Member O'Brien and seconded by Member Alfonso. Can I get a real call, please?
Yes. Member Cat.
Yes.
Member O'Brien.
Yes.
Yes.
Good luck.
What's our next steps? Village Board or?
Good luck. Well, when are you planning on opening then? What date? You got, you got a proposed date for opening?
So, I know they haven't finished by December.
There you go, good plan.
Good time of the year too for people. Alright.
Mister Chairman, I have one more question about this. I'm not looking to influence the uh. Vote that we already have taken, but um. This property, as I recall, was possibly the uh parking. Was possibly the. Source of additional parking for one of the uses that we, special uses that we granted for.
That little office?
Yeah.
That was on the other side though, wasn't it? That was to the south.
Okay.
I think.
Just asking for clarification.
He was behind into the south and they got the agreement from the property to the south to allow them to be along that fence. If I, if we're thinking about the same case.
Yes, yes, we are. Clarifying question.
Does that make sense?
Well, yeah. Um, I vaguely recall getting, I mean, seeing the letter, but see, that's again my point. Yeah, that's my point. Um, I think we're ill-suited to uh keep track of stuff like that. And Valerie was uh extolling the virtues of, you know, you know, new formatting and application. Uh, for some of these special uses and as I recall, she was saying that, oh yeah, it's gonna be so easier to keep, so much easier to keep track of stuff, so.
Okay. Let's get to the next case, uh, case twenty-three twenty-nine. Special use permit for a salon at one eighty-three fifty Kedzie Avenue, suite two oh two. Applicant is Jos- Jocelyn Alamudi, did I get that right? Okay. Okay, use it for a second. I got, I gotta roll through some stuff. I'll call you, uh. This is a request for a special use permit for a salon, um. The subject property currently is B-three General Business District Multi-Tenant Shopping Center. The proposed remains the same. Uh, in, in the materials, we have a description of the surrounding properties. Uh, with their zoning and land use uh in each direction. Legal notice was published to Daily South Town on September twenty-second to twenty-twenty-three. Letters were sent to sixteen property owner, owners and residents within two hundred and fifty feet. Uh, did we get any response to the letters? Okay. And in our packet, we have an application prepared by the applicant, a response to special use standards prepared by the applicant. A commercial lease prepared by Elliot Taylor, presumed to be the landlord. A floor plan prepared by the applicant, the staff exhibits prepared by staff. Uh, quick background, one eighty-three fifty Kedzie Avenue's two-story building with multiple tenants. Traditionally, this building is a professional office building with individual tenant suites with a shared central entrance. Current use range ranges from medical offices to professional services, um. So, and salon uses that are more typical in a multi-tenant shopping center. The tenants of the building share a common parking lot. Let's see. I think that's far enough. Come on down. So if you could, please state your name and address for the record. You can use personal or business addresses.
Jocelyn Alamudi, one eighty-three fifty South Kedzie Avenue, unit two zero two, Homewood, Illinois.
And uh, if you could raise your right hand and sort of tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, why don't you go ahead and tell us in your own words what it is that you are uh wanting to do here?
Um, so I'm doing a little something outside of, a little different outside of real estate. So, um. Beauty is one of the industries, along with transportation, that um was able to withstand COVID. Um, and so, you know, I just had a harebrained idea, um, the owner is a childhood friend. Um, to, you know, open a salon. I am not a stylist, um, just, you know, an owner. And um, it's, you know, Ian Terrell is my son, so it's named after my five-year-old. And um, when I thought of that name, I just, you know, I said, you know, it sounds luxurious. I kinda thought of the Paul Mitchells and Elizabeth Ardens and. Um, I wanted to have an upscale feel. Um, and you know, sadly, um, there are some great spaces in the city. Um, but Homewood is just one of the number one south suburbs right now, um, very booming for minorities and businesses. And I thought, you know, it was a great place to start a business. Um, it's a little smaller space. It does have a private suite in it. Um, so my goal is four salons, I mean, four stations. Um, and then the private suite would have a station inside of it. Um, and that's just for the stylist. Or esthetician or um, somebody that wants more of a private experience. Um, and you know, the hours would be that of, you know, a general salon like that of a Paul Mitchell or L'Oréal, like the eight to five. Or on the weekends, we're catering to the working women and the housewives and retirees. Um, so that's just kinda my goal, just to, you know, generate some income and. Allow stylists to have a place um to safely and professionally um do their craft.
Okay, quick question. So you've named it after your son. He's five?
Yes.
Has he gotten an attorney to make sure he gets a cut? Choosing his name.
Yeah, we're working on it now. We're working on the trust aspect now.
Start the questioning from the board and start the other.
Oh, hi, good evening.
Hi.
Um, okay, so then you will be renting stations to in independent contractors.
Yes, me.
So you, and um, will you be in the uh location? Will you be there while, while they're there or how is that?
So I do plan to have a receptionist there, there's there. Um, you know, I work part-time for social security. Um, I'm a, a, a verbatim recorder. Um, I'm a student, um, and I live in Hyde Park. So those three, put those three together. Um, it can be tough, but I have made it my business, um, just because, you know, this is my childhood's for in commercial property. I will be there. I do want my um contractors to know that I will be on the premises, just to make sure policies are being adhered to, rules are being adhered to. Um, and you know, it's, I was just told by a previous owner that they should see your face, you know, they. Should definitely see your face. I mean, I will be installing a camera, um, but sometimes a camera's a little different than being up close and personal.
That's true. And then um, all of the stylists who come in have to be, have to have whatever certifications and insurance and things that.
So the insurance that I have, like some stylists in the state of Illinois now, from the research that I've did, um, they are. They do have the option to carry a liability. So let's say you, Commissioner Alfonso, you come in, there's water, you slip. That would be Ian Terrell's um policy with State Farm, because the water was on the floor of the salon. But if let's say April is doing a color job on you. And it damages some follicles, then that is April's insurance that would entail that. Um, I think my agent did say that it might carry some and that I could probably do an umbrella policy. To cover that. I'll look at the declaration again, but definitely the liability insurance and then the stylist's insurance is different from that.
And then you've stated that um. You'll have four stations, but you don't anticipate having more than a maximum of three people in the salon at any time.
Right, so um, that was just a, a, agreed guess. Basically, I deal with uh stylists who run their books well. So let's say there's a stylist who has a person who likes to come early, seven AM. So everybody else is at work, so that stylist and that client will be there, inclu- if you include me. Then there might be someone that can come at five PM, another stylist. That stylist would be there. The weekends might be a little different. Um, but my policy is definitely gonna be to adhere to a strict timeframe because it's a small space. So I won't have space for six people waiting to get their hair done. If you know a color job's gonna take from one to three o'clock. Then you, you need to, you finish your client. If you wanna get a bite to eat, a drink of water, maybe by three thirty. Then your next appointment is coming in because I'm only gonna do like three waiting chairs and I don't even expect those to be occupied.
Okay. Um. I think that's all I have.
Yes, thank you.
Member Cat.
Hi, once again, um. I really don't have any questions for you. They're directed, or my comments are directed at staff. Using this, I'm meeting the divorce, so I'm using this as an example of a multi-tenant building. Uh, the aggregate is ten thousand plus square feet. Um, if you assume a parking load of one space for three hundred, you, you get a requirement of thirty-six. The existing lot has thirty.
Thirty-nine, that's what I said.
Thirty-nine if you include nine on, on the street. This is why I'm making the point that we're here to consider. On-site, off-street parking. This is, uh, aren't we supposed to evaluate things that way?
I don't know. I, I would say that if I was coming to the building and there was a spot on the street and I needed, I would.
I understand that, but uh, the um, our zoning ordinance doesn't necessarily give us the leeway. Uh, when we're evaluating this to include on-street parking. I'm not saying we don't, I'm just saying. Literal interpretation of the ordinance says. Uh, this is the requirement for a particular space. Now, my point is, you know, this, if this, um. If this building were to revert to entirely um professional services. Uh, medical uh offices or whatever, the parking load would be one space per two hundred square feet. Which would translate into fifty-four required spaces. Um, if this were uh instead, um. Uh, with a different configuration of interior spaces, uh, there are some uses uh in our um. Ordinance that would require a parking load of one space per two hundred fifty square feet. Uh, if the building would go in that direction at some point, uh, the total um. Requirement would be on the order of forty-three parking spaces. The existing parking lot only has thirty. I um, um. Do these calculations and throw these numbers out just to make the point that. Um, when we evaluate situations like this. Um, we have to have going forward. I'm not trying to say that we're gonna penalize uh you for. Uh, for what is there right now, but going forward, um, I think it's important for us as a board to. Have an idea of what the existing uses are, what are the approved existing uses. And what their parking load is uh versus what exists um out in back and that. That would be uh, uh, the information I think that would be proven for us to uh, uh, to. Become aware of to properly uh frame our decision. I mean, conceivably, we, you know, have and forbid that we. We um very cavalierly um allow. Uh, this building, for instance, to become an entire. Um, uh spa and salon outlet, um, which would. Possibly uh require an unadroitly amount of parking spaces, but that's really my point. These are what we're supposed to follow with our new ordinance, um, then we need to um. In these multi-tenant buildings, we need to keep track of that. Does that make sense?
So just to clarify, um, does that have any, are you saying that has any bearing on this case tonight or not?
Well, I don't think, how, how can we do that? I mean, unless we, uh, unless. Um, we take a timeout and.
No, I just wanna, I just wanna clarify.
What's already in this building.
Right.
You know, I, I don't think.
That's what I wanna clarify.
Not advocating that.
Okay, that, all this I wanna clarify for the record for our decision tonight.
But then, when was the last time we had uh an approval at this building? Wasn't it not more than uh three, four months ago? May, maybe?
Right here.
So that's my point. Um, you know, silly me, I should have uh been thinking about this. Um, back then, so.
Any other?
No.
Questions?
Thank you.
Member Brand.
Good evening. I was over at the building today and I just have a couple of questions that I wanna clarify.
Sure.
Um, I noticed that your name is on the sign outside the building.
Yes.
And your name is on the pane of glass next to the door.
Yes.
And the suite is completely outfitted.
Yes.
All equipment, uh, styling chairs, the washing area, the reception signs, everything. The signage that is on the pane of glass indicates that the hours are eight to eight. Uh, Tuesday through Saturday. And in our material that we received, it's nine through five. Could you clarify that?
Yeah, so that was a Etsy order. So they're rescinding another one that, you know, I do have the invoice for my phone, in my phone. Um, it was basically a clerical error. So I did get it corrected because I do want it to be posted correctly.
Which is correct.
The hours that are on the application, the night of.
Nine to five.
Yes, sir.
So the. Numbers, I mean, the hours on the uh pane of glass next to the door.
So the vendor from Etsy put the wrong hours. They did like, I guess, like a makeshift. Because of course, um, I think Illinois still has the no service on Monday. Um, you know, close on Sunday for the most part. And then the hours would be like the nine to five. To kind of accommodate like the professional bill, the professional offices in the building.
In the past, because there has been some turnover at that particular suite, uh, another one too as well. Uh, but in the past, the uh representation by the owner was that the square footage was five hundred square feet. But the drawing that uh you provided tonight is, I believe, five hundred and eighty-six and a half. I just wanna note that for the record.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. Um, I am terrible at geometry for the record.
No, no, it's not any.
Okay, okay.
Not not any full, no, no.
Okay.
I'm clarifying for the record, the representation in the past by the owner as opposed to. What you measured and what you are going to be taking.
Oh, I got it. Oh, I got it.
Um. I'd like to dovetail on Commissioner Cap's comments with regards to uh, the parking. Uh, we just passed in December, well, it was passed by the. Uh, village board in January, a new ordinance. And uh, we haven't had that many cases, obviously, in the last nine months. Uh, that impacted on parking. But the one thing I did notice, particularly with this particular building, which is near me. It has, if I recall correctly. Uh, had tenants that required upwards of fifty-two parking places, but there are only thirty. The conversations, uh, the discussions when those cases appeared. Got to the extreme of people parking at the Jewel parking lot and then crossing Ketsy Avenue to come to the building. Um, obviously, that's extreme. But one thing I didn't notice with the new ordinance, and it will probably take uh, several other cases. Uh, to identify this, but. In planning today. Uh, there is a uh, great consideration of density. And uh, buildings are smaller, areas are smaller. Um, they're higher, more vertical, obviously. And uh, that changes things. And where we could say previously, that uh. A salon would take a person in the chair, person behind the chair, and uh, you and and. You go through the numbers of the number of chairs, you would then come up with a number for that particular business. Today, in the new zoning, it is by building, it's not by business. And uh, the calculation of thirty-six for this particular building. Um. Greatly diminishes what the demands for parking are. Of the individual businesses of the old ordinance. And I think we're going to have to um, pick along, look at this as we move. Forward with this new zoning ordinance and perhaps change something uh, uh, in the future. Um, I just, as I said, wanted to dovetail the comments of Commissioner Cap. Um. It's a concern, and it's a concern in particular areas of the village. Where there is more concentration of business, such as the downtown central business and the transition. Uh, area, uh, that zoning area. Uh, not as much in this particular building and and neighborhood. When I was over there today. The uh, street parking was being utilized. There were cars parked up on one hundred eighty-third street. Uh, so. By the way, I do wanna reflect on the fact that I think there, you are going to be the fourth salon in the building. Out of six suites. Okay. It'll be a salon building.
No, he's definitely gonna, um, definitely the doctor is very comfortable there. Um, and then, of course, the uh, construction one, you know, the realty office. Um, those are definitely a staple. Um, I think that because it's such a private quaint street. I think that it does serve more comfortability. And I did do research on like, like, yeah, cause there was. I I follow up, I wanna get approved out here. So I was like, like, who's using the, who's using the space at Jewel? Like, that's automatic toll. And then um, we found out that it was a business that's no longer in that area that was like utilizing the jewel spaces. Or the doctor had to kind of remind his, his patients, like, hey, you can't park at Jewel's. Because that volume of the time that he's there might have been a little high. Um, so that's why I ma- made it my business to like, let anybody know that's looking to rent. Like, look, you know. You have to be able to schedule within that time because we don't want the condominium association complaining. Even though they have park, private drives, it might be a holiday and their family may wanna park, you know? And you can't block the driveways, it has to be street parking for them too.
The fitness uh, studio is still there.
Uh, she opted to move to a smaller suite, um, just because, you know, the clientele was low. So um, I think Alex usually does like more evening classes. Um, so that's typically at the time the doctor is gone and my hours would be closed.
Well, my point in mentioning that is, in the previous uh, zoning code. I think that particular business occupied fifteen parking requirements.
Wow.
The way it was calculated.
Wow.
I don't have any other questions at this point.
Okay. I don't have any questions for the applicant, just point out one thing for staff in our materials listed for documents for review, just kinda realized here, Member O'Brien brought it up. Uh, we listed the commercial lease repaired by Elliot Taylor, which I announced in the beginning, and actually in the packet, it's missing. Okay. Okay, I would doubt there's really anything in there that at this moment is. Any anything that's m- m- make or break of anybody's decision, so. Um, but I'll just wanna point that out for the record. Okay, um. Do we have any comments or questions from members of the audience? And again, I'll remind you, if we do. We'll ask you to state your name and address for the record and swear you in. Anybody? Okay. Well, at this point then, I would entertain a. Anyone got another, another? Member Cap?
Once again, I'd like to point out this informal uh, census of the uses of uh, of this building. Uh, four out of six are salons. Salons are incur a parking load of one space per two hundred square feet, so. Without getting into the specifics of each particular suite. I'm just pointing out that um, it's likely that the. Required number of spaces for the current users of this building might be a little bit more than thirty-six. Which is more than the thirty actual parking spaces um, in the parking lot, so. Uh, my point is that we just need to keep track of this going forward.
Okay. At this point. Entertainer motion to recommend approval of case twenty-three twenty-nine.
Mr. Chairman, I'll recommend approval of case twenty-three dash twenty-nine. To grant a special use permit for a salon. In B three, general business district for Ian Tarot Hair Design Studio. At one eight three five zero Ketsy Avenue, suite two oh two. With the condition that all required licenses and certifications for the services. Are provided prior to issuance of a business operation certificate. And incorporate the findings of fact into the record.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Member O'Brien, seconded by Member Alfonso. Can I get a real call, please?
Yes.
Yes.
Number Ryan?
Yes.
Yes. Positive vote, what's the next step? Village Board? On that one?
It's a unanimous recommendation, so.
Okay, I'm gonna say, I'm sorry, what does that mean?
That's the final. They do take the recommendation of this one here.
Got it, okay.
Good talk to you.
Thank you.
Good luck. All right, let me uh, swing back to the start of the agenda here. And. Next item, old business. Anything old to bring up? Any complaints, any? Anything we gotta redo? Okay, new business? Anything coming up? Welcome. Well, as you can tell, we're very detail oriented up here. And uh. We'll give you consistent feedback on what we see in the materials. Wait till Angela gets back, cause I wanna add something.
I can comment, I've experienced the opposite of having a not particularly detailed or into mission as well, and so it's a uh, in a previous community. Uh, it's a um, the, I'm welcome.
Usually it's all constructive, so. Um. Yeah, I mean, I wanna make a, a suggestion on the agenda. So, we've kinda had this. Uh. Kinds of discussions before, and I'm I'm not saying we're pointing fingers or saying anything was 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 bad, but just. I'd like to make a suggestion that, and I think I brought it up before when we were, when we were approving the um. Ordinances that I felt that. Discussions that are. Regarding the construction of the ordinance or the format of the ordinance or how the ordinance works. Outside of the specifics of any one case. Should be discussed at a different point in the agenda. Maybe add a point for like the comments that Mike had, which were all very good and well thought out and what Member O'Brien also supported. Very valid uh, points to bring up because I think. The the point is, we could be setting a trap for ourselves here or for the businesses where we might be overloading parking just because of the switch that we did. In in yours. So it's an appropriate discussion. What I'm bringing up is, in my view, my opinion. It's not appropriate to have that discussion in the middle of a case unless it is. Vi- specifically, uh, can can make or break the vote on that case. So if it, if it's something that could determine. Which way that. Uh, case can be, is gonna be heard and and gonna be decided upon, then yes, certainly it belongs in that discussion. But if it's more like you were saying, outside framed, outside of that case and more pointing towards the the ordinances in general, et cetera. I think that out of fairness to the applicants and to avoid confusion, and that's why I kept to ask clarifying if it was determined to the case. That's why I was asking that. I think we should box that up and do it after the cases, like right now, like old business, new business or. Or housekeeping or some kind of an agenda item like that where we can talk and we can. And I'm not saying it was a waste of time, but I'm saying not. Lengthen the applicant's case with our internal discussions or or. Issues unless it directly affects that case. Is there any thoughts on that?
Sure, um, I would have. If, you know, knowing that this was truly your um. Your wishes, I would have asked the table both of these. To ask staff to do a census in each building to determine. What the uses are, what the square footage is, and what the parking load is.
No, you could ask that anyway. Well, I mean, that would have been a fair question because of the transition from one.
And slash or, I would have just um, voted no on both of this. In the absence of information. So that's why I, if you're asking me to apologize.
No, no, not at all.
My statements.
Don't, they were appropriate and like I said, well thought out, and I think that they need to be looked at. My point was, if they don't have anything to do, and and it's just an example, we've we've done it before. Where we've critiqued or or went code diving. Into the structure of the code, but it really didn't have anything to do with the case, but it came up because of something the case brought up. We should. Kick that to after the cases so that we don't sit here with applicants standing there going, the hell are we talking about, you know? Just out of out of courtesy and for lack to, for lack of clarity. And that's why I kept asking to clarify, does this, is this gonna have anything specifically to do with the outcome of this case? Because if it did, and then it was appropriate to have it within the case, sure.
I told you, my choices were.
Your choice, well, you.
I I could have said, I move to uh, table these.
And that could have been an option, and then you said, yes, sir, I I intend to.
And it could, the motion could have died, and then my other option would have been, well, I'll just vote no on.
And all of them.
One, two, three, four, that would have been a tough sell.
So all of them, all those options. You could have exercised any one of those, and all would have been appropriate.
Right.
But that, that, and that would have been your choice to ask for that.
But I thought this would move things along. Uh, my concerns were addressed, so I. Then therefore did not have to uh, ask for a timeout to get this information by tabling this. And I was more, uh, let's say assured, um, to vote yes in both cases.
Okay, so and then, so I guess kind of my, to clarify my point, yeah, so if. If you know you're not gonna ask to table it, or if you know you're not gonna vote no because of it. But you wanna get the point out there in the record. My suggestion is to do it elsewhere in the agenda, not in the case itself. But if you were going to ask to table it or to, or you thought you were gonna vote no. Then it certainly would be appropriate to bring up that discussion so that everybody else up here can understand where you're coming from, cause they may wanna go that way too. So it's a fine line. I I think it's, it's kind of our, it's our decision that if we know that it's not going to affect a vote or a. Um, movement of the case to hold it until the cases are over, but. Just a suggestion, that's all I'll make.
We did talk about this earlier in the year, as I recall. Analogously, um, having to do with interpretations of our new ordinance. I would like to make it clear that uh, I am an advocate of our new ordinance. Um, I feel that um, the questions that I uh, asked in the. It was almost a two-year process, was it not, Angela? Yeah, so um, what I'm trying to, what I'm trying to say is that um. My questions throughout that two-year process were always addressed. I felt comfortable with how this ordinance was put together. Um. Clearly, there are some um, things that I think we're all gonna learn.
But we knew that too.
Yeah.
We said there were gonna be things they had to get.
Exactly. My comments this evening. Were in no way, shape or form intended to be um, derogatory.
Oh, they were taken.
Either the staff or the the ordinance.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just looking at the efficiency of 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 getting the case. Up, done, and being clear, because sometimes if we go like code diving. It could kinda muddy up what the heck the discussion was. And so keeping it separate, if it really doesn't affect the case, to me makes sense. That's why I'm making the suggestion. It has nothing to do with whether it was appropriate or whether it was derogatory or any, any of that. That's not, it was all um. It was all good, it was just about where it took place.
Make a comment or. Were uh. Very appropriate. However, we are new into this zoning. And I'm sure we're gonna bump into something else like this in the future. I think your point is well taken, that it should be perhaps a separate uh, agenda item. And maybe we should uh, identify it as zoning business, not new business or old business. Zoning business.
Yeah, so we can have these discussions.
I liken this to um. Uh, your point is, we shouldn't be mixing uh, applicant. Discussion with case discussion, I mean, with business zoning discussion. We had a case earlier this year with regards to spot uh, zoning, if you recall. And that was delayed. The the resident, the applicant was delayed several months. Because of the exercise that we went through at that time, and that should not occur again. So this is similar, a little different variation on the same thing.
But things we need to talk about, but. Outside of a, the the. The case, yeah.
Yeah.
And and don't take that the wrong way either to say like, I mean. During a case, if you have a question about what the heck we changed, by all means, you need to ask it right there during the case. Don't, don't ask for clarification afterwards, obviously. I mean, I'm not saying don't do that. I'm just saying if you've got a prepared discussion or a prepared uh. Code diving exercise that you think we need to do, that should happen outside of a case, that's all, so.
I think it examples the fact that these two particular patients impacted on parking, which has always been sensitive. I think it examples the fact that these two particular cases impacted on parking, which has always been sensitive. And it has been changed because of the new zoning. And uh I think we're gonna bump into some of this type of discussion in the future. But we could avoid it now, if if you agree that maybe an agenda item should be zoning business, how would you wanna treat that? Would you want the commissioner to make a comment to staff so that it's on the agenda?
I think it'd be standing on the agenda, so that everybody else can kinda prep for it?
Yeah, exactly.
You gotta know about it, I had enough of time to to do something like that. Um but I think. Certainly, yeah, certainly, if you know ahead of time, hey, I'm gonna, you know, I'm gonna bring some comments about parking, cuz I think we got an issue here. And she could put it right on the agenda in in zoning business and say parking discussion. But if you come up with something during a case, and you say, you know, this is probably gonna need further discussion down the road. Certainly feel free to bring it up during that agenda item, I mean, that's how I would envision handling it, if that makes any sense. But just a thought, just a suggestion, um. So, something to think about, um just real quick question, does anybody recall, so? We talked about parking ad nauseam with the consultant. And and about multi-tenant, we talked about that ad nauseam as well, did we not stumble on this, that we would have this trap? Did you, or we did, but we 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 just kinda dismissed it or what?
Hey.
Cuz I don't recall.
Darlene is my witness. I know I specifically brought this up towards the end of last year, right before we approved the ordinance, so that would be November, December. However, Darlene would testify that I probably wasn't as clear as I could have been.
I couldn't tell you what I did last week, so don't ask.
Well, no, I'm I, and I'm not, I'm not trying to um put you on the spot, but my point is.
I'm sure it's in the minutes.
Yeah, but um my point is, I I pointed out back last fall. And then we had, if I'm not mistaken, uh we might have had a a case earlier in the year. Um and I can't remember which one, and it might have been that, it was a a use on Dixie Highway and the old. Um. Federal Highway Administration Office Building, and my point was that this is an example of. A person. Let's say formulating. There, i- in fact, the situation, as I recall, on Dixie Highway earlier in the year was, um the person had um. A multiplicity of tenants who. Could have been.
Doing the various different things, but we didn't know.
Would have, yeah, and we didn't know, but and then each of those, if we would have evaluated each one of them separately, they all would have had. Different parking requirements, and so I would say, yes, we um. Uh considered it, but what I'm acknowledging is, I think this case, these two cases today. Um made it a little bit more simple for us to realize that different. Uses have different parking loads, that's really what it comes down to.
So.
And I was, I was very, I was acknowledging, I was not clear in um. Making it clear both last fall and earlier this year that this is a likely consequence of this.
Like we, like we said, we knew that there was gonna be cases that might have to kinda hash this stuff out, cuz it come, because it come, becomes more clear in a case application than some theoretical discussion.
Right, so my point is, going forward, I mean, you, you know, Seth, I I hope I didn't um. Upset you with this, but I think this was, in fact, if you recall, I think last year or early this year, I called it a thought experiment. Uh but this today, these two cases, and if we would have had the third one, boy, that'd have made this an interesting evening. Uh but my point is, th- these two cases perfectly illustrate and very simply and. Easily illustrate the point I was making that when you have um.
The two different calculations.
Tenning tenant building, and we had an earlier situation where the space had multi-tenants. Which, if you look at the uses, would incur different parking loads, and we, my my. Caution at at that time, both times was, we have to pay attention to this.
So is it something that staff, is that something that you intend to kinda look into, is the for multi-tenant, the way that we calculate?
Yes.
And then kinda bring us some findings to discuss, or do we need to do like in the next meeting, do a? Discussion first, or you're gonna kinda look at it first? See what makes sense? Cuz we'd have to officially revise if we were gonna change anything, right?
Yeah, we can do that, I think we had talked before about taking some topics.
Right, right, just kicking.
Yeah, we can do that with a, just an amendment or an addendum, or how how would we?
You could discuss it, and then if you wanted to look into doing an amendment, we would bring it back for a public hearing and.
See, I'm more, I mean, just to offer some affirmation here, I'm even more um confident that we have a. A a good ordinance um going forward, I mean, I wanna emphasize that, and. Like I say, I'm repeating myself for effect, that these two cases today perfectly illustrated and very simply illustrated.
We wouldn't have thought that up when we were having the discussion.
Right, so.
Okay.
The third case, the middle case, oh man, that would have been a killer today.
Okay, uh before we adjourn, um any comments or anything from the audience, sir? You've been waiting, I wanna give you an opportunity to uh make any comment, if we have your name and address for the record and the purpose of your comment?
Is there? A group, something that deals with cycling infrastructure in the home area, cuz I'm.
As far as cycling on the road, you mean? But are you referring to on the road, or are you referring to like in a studio like he's gonna do?
Oh, no, 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 I'm talking about cyclists on the.
On the road, outside on the road, there's.
Because most of the infrastructure is. Spotty, you can cycle down, so you're gonna bump out, and you're ready to ditch a car. And. I'm just wondering, what is being done about cycling, you know that's coming? So cycling is coming, this one.
We have um bike lanes established in the village, um part of the issue is, and Angela, you can correct me if I'm wrong. Oh, some roads, some of your main roads that we do have lanes on are state roads, and some are um. Managed by county and some are managed by the village, so it's a little bit of a mishmash of requirements and what you're allowed to do and not do. So that, if you're seeing inconsistency as you use them, that's part of the reason why, and you can't, really can't get away from that. Um but it, uh one good resource to um try to affect change on how cycling lanes and and that is used would be to look up. Um there's, there's different cycling federations in the South Suburban area. That advocate for cycling, and I would suggest going to uh the bike shop up in town, probably has information. On on those, yeah, they probably have information about those types of um advocacy groups that. Uh. You know, campaign for getting better cycling infrastructure in place. That's right. Um and then member O'Brien has brought up, yeah, one hundred and eighty-third um is gonna be. Constricted, redesigned, and and the lanes are gonna go down, and we're gonna see, I believe, a cycling lane uh. Be going there, protected, I'm not sure, I don't know what the plan is, probably.
But I notice a lot of businesses do not have. Bike parking, and bike parking, but.
And I can tell you that that's a topic that's being addressed, because uh right now we have a um, what's it, a TOD plan? Transportation, that plan, and that's been a big uh topic of discussion and big suggestion, I think that's probably one of the big ones. So I think you're probably gonna see some change on that eventually.
That's why I asked, but I know this one is transitory, this is transitory, so.
Right.
Area. And cycling, walking, scooters, all that stuff. Are hard.
Right.
But uh as a cyclist, I find it difficult to move, and even if I wanna go to like, wanna go to Red Bird or something. There's very few cycle parking stations over the uh. The racks.
Yeah.
And the businesses, the like restaurants and things, which is going, like I like to go places when we can sit down, cool out. And that would be free to get better.
Um. Do we have on the, for the TODs, are still a link on the website for public comment, is that still open? And that's on the Homewood Village website under. But but you can go to the Village website and find the TOD plan section, and you should be able to leave public comment in there. So that would be helpful to get your specific.
Yeah.
Desires in there, but but be assured though that that's one of the bigger. I think that's one of the bigger can-do items on the list, so I would expect there'll be some movement on that. Okay, thank you.
I have a question, um is one of your concerns the fact that at various businesses throughout the village? There aren't racks or someplace to lock up a bike? Because if you use the chain and you locked it up on site and just set it down while you went into the store. Somebody in a van could pick up the bike and put it in the van, you have, you need something that is uh connected to the ground, the sidewalk or the building. To secure the bike, okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah.
That's what I'm looking at, despite the bike parking, but I've talked to people who open their restaurants.
Okay.
About putting it, they just, you know, put the money, do it themselves, but whatnot to your builders. It doesn't have to be every. Business, but just a sufficient amount of, you like round there where you got the uh. But the plane here over there on uh.
Martin.
Yeah. There, there should be uh stations there, new places where people, and then green cycles. People on cycles, and you can have more people going into the corner.
Add that to the public discussion, cuz that was, that was brought up, so the more, the more voices that are in that discussion, the. More likely the action will happen.
See now, uh it's hard to gauge it now because of the construction of the uh. The head station on the east side of the railroad at Harwood and Ridge, but. Um there, there are, there's a big area for uh bikes on the west side. And so, and there, before, before this construction began, I know there were racks like that on the west, west side of Harwood as well. So my point is, it might not be in front of Red Bird, but it's like across the street from Red Bird.
That's all an example, but uh.
Right.
And and you know, at a train station, people will cycle to the train station, take the train, so I went all the way, all the way to uh. Minneapolis, Minnesota, just checking it out, I just took my bike, rode over to the, to the station over there on uh. You know, whatever.
Go for Amcheck.
Yeah, got on it, got on the metro, took the metro downtown, cycled over to the, to the uh. Union Station, got on the train, that, put my bike on the train, got to uh Minnesota, got off, Minneapolis, Minnesota, got off. At the Union Station there, cycled to my daughter's house. And came back.
Sounds like a good trip?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anything else? We are, okay, I'll make, entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Uh and move, move by everybody and second by everybody.
All right. So is our, are we voting on this?
Everybody says yes.
Uh our next meeting is next week?
Shoot, you know what I didn't do, I meant to, I should have mentioned something. In the me, in the beginning of the meeting, I meant to do it about Fred and uh his wife.